I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(audience cheering)
Is that loud enough?
At least they waited until we got done.
That was a fire alarm.
Gentlemen, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
None.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of our last public business meeting?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We have quite a press corps here this evening. We'll have to add another row.
That's questionable, but...
Item one is a primary election update. Diane?
I'll make it quick. Early voting is set to begin on April 14th, Thursday, running to April the 21st from 10:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. right here in room 100. And we will be implementing same-day registration for the early voting period only.
Very good.
Got it. Thank you. Item number two, it's the Week of the Young Child. Ms. Heather Glass.
On behalf of the Western Maryland chapter of the Maryland Association for the Education of Young Children, I would like to thank you for taking time tonight to recognize the important work of early childhood professionals. The early childhood years lay the foundation for children's success in school and later life. The Week of the Young Child is a time to plan how we, as citizens of a community, of a state, and of a nation, will better meet the needs of all young children and their families. It is a time to recognize that children's opportunities are our responsibility and to recommit ourselves to ensuring that each and every child experiences the type of early environment at home, at childcare, at school, and in the community that will promote their early learning. Your recognition this evening solidifies not only the mission of our association to empower those who care for and educate young children, but the work of every early childhood professional in our community. I thank you for this acknowledgement this evening.
Thank you. Item number three, WCBC 40th anniversary. Would you like to say anything?
Actually, why don't you?
Please.
I didn't think you ever turned down the...
What I was a little bit worried about when I walked in tonight was that a good bit of my staff is here, and one of them actually said, "Could I clock out for them when they had to leave tonight?" Does that mean you're all on the clock?
Yeah.
Thank you all for coming. Gentlemen, thank you for this. It's easier, I think, to talk on the radio than it is to do something like this, so bear with me. You can't do this for 40 years without the people that I work with, so I would accept this on, quite frankly, behalf of the... If I've ever said anything to any of the three of you that has been offensive, I'd like to apologize now. I was looking to see who was here in the audience. I did ask if there was a gun check. It scared me when you all got up a moment ago and moved your chairs. A lot of you I've not seen in a while, so it's good to see you again, both in the audience and out of the audience. There's a lady that works for me that is about 43 or 44 years old, and she says that she doesn't want to have to find a job when she's 45 or 50, so I've already promised her that I'm going to work 20 more years, so I hope you're all around for the 60th.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't let him sit down, because he can't get back up that easily. He's getting old.
We would like to have you up front. Please. Sheriff, if you don't mind, while he's by himself a few minutes.
This is another official citation to David Norman. I love Cumberland Broadcasting Company, WCBC 40-year anniversary. Whereas Allegheny County Government wishes to publicly recognize WCBC for its entrepreneurial and innovative owner and operator on noteworthy occasion of the company's 40th anniversary. Whereas WCBC headquartered in Cumberland, Allegheny County, and devoted to the civic welfare of our community, is an exemplary community member and exceptional example of successful and independent small business. WCBC's local emphasis was highlighted 20 years ago during the flood of the century, which hit and devastated our community on January 19th, 1996, and is considered WCBC's single most important day in broadcast history. Whereas we, the Board of County Commissioners, take this special occasion to extend sincere congratulations to Dave Norman, the morning mayor, not morning commissioner, and everyone associated, past and present, with WCBC on this impressive achievement. Now it's time to look back and appreciate a time to look forward and to appreciate. WCBC, the station you can count on. This is signed the Board of County Commissioners Jake Shade, Creed Brody, and Bill Valentine. Thanks.
We need a posed picture.
One more picture.
And then we'll have to join.
Yeah.
Remember, they're on the clock.
(laughter)
Write my admony paper this day.
All right.
Let's bring this whole team up here. Let's crack the paper.
Yeah, Tom's news ones.
Yeah, they'll run this one.
I'll bet this will be on the front page.
That's a challenge. Why would we take the long way to the clock? Good, good, good. You guys get in here with him. Let me get over... I'll get in there. Yeah, we might as well three D pair. Dog, get in there. Three D deal with that.
No. This is kind of...
So we can all get in.
And I think I'm going to change. I love big hair, but it needs to be here.
Oh, seriously? Yes.
(laughter)
Sure girl, always has to be.
I know.
Sometimes I make it mean.
Yeah, exactly. We'll be doing this at four times. Perfect.
All right. That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You don't even remember them.
Were you alive on the flood?
Barely.
Thank you.
And Dave, before you do go, I do want to say, after all the years of being dealing with your staff and stuff, it's been fantastic to deal with every one of them. As much as I have personally dealt with you, I know Bill has more, even we disagree, you've always been respectful, and we most certainly do always appreciate that. And for as much as I've heard Dave Carroll on the radio, every morning I feel like I know the guy, even though I've thought about stopping in Hagerstown and meeting, because every morning when I tune in, I'll watch her six, you know, I get to hear...
Do you have that tape, because I'll sell something.
But thank you, sir. See ya.
Number four is Fair Housing Month. Mr. Nedved.
I'm taking a picture with him already.
You have 30 seconds, Dave.
No, I'm actually just willing to have the proclamation on it.
That's great.
Bretta.
Read it off, we're good. You don't want a picture?
I'll take a picture of you.
You don't want a picture?
Well, it's Fair Housing Month. Okay. Stand in the mic. April is Fair Housing Month, and we're recognizing that with this proclamation, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Nedved.
Thank you.
We, the Allegheny County Commissioners, join the U.S. Housing and Urban Development Commission in celebrating the 48th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act of 1968. This act guarantees the right of all Americans regardless of race, color, national origin, religion, sex, family status, and disability to live in the neighborhoods of their choice. Equal housing is an opportunity essential in order to promote justice for all the citizens of Allegheny County. This is signed by the Board of County Commissioners Jake Shade, Creed Brody, and Bill Valentine. And now a picture?
Yeah, now a picture.
Now, we'll get the picture.
Now, gee. She's last.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
You're off, Agent.
Yeah.
Thanks, Paul.
All righty. Item number five is Introduction of Code-Hemeral Bill 2-16. Mr. Rudd.
Yes, back in 2013, the Commissioners approved something called the Residential Sprinkler Incentive Tax Credit, provided for $500 a year, up to $500 a year for three years to offset the cost of installing residential sprinkler systems. At that time, it was optional in Allegheny County, and the bill at that time provided for a sunset whenever it became mandatory. What's the bill that I've prepared at your request does two things. One, it expands the credit from $500 up to $1,000 a year for three years. It also doesn't sunset, because now it is mandatory that you have sprinklers in Allegheny County, but it does have a sunset provision for the bill for June 30th, 2020, so that you can reconsider it at that time, whether you want to extend it, change the amount or whatever. And, you know, today's a legislative day, you can introduce, have a hearing in a couple of weeks, and then vote on it at a later date. It would go into effect July 1 because the current bill does go through June 30 of this year.
I'll make a motion that we introduce...
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any comment on that? None?
Barb? Okay.
There you go.
Thank you for coming and supporting that.
Item number six, Code-Hemeral Bill 3-16. Mr. DeVore.
Commissioners, as you recall, you requested the Emergency Services Board to review the existing funding formula for Fire and EMS in Allegheny County. We completed that process. What this bill does is provides an opportunity to move away from what we believe was an antiquated funding formula and implement a more equitable formula that's really based on quantitative measures. So, Mr. Rudd, can I address the legal issues on this bill?
Sure. Yeah, the old bill, the old, old bill, actually had a chart, and said percentages, so much to City Council, and so much to then to every other fire company. This bill eliminates the chart. What it basically says is the Emergency Services Board will basically recommend how the money should be appropriated to each company as needed, based on a lot of things that Dick provided last time. That would be submitted as part of the budget process to the Commissioners each fiscal year. You will then approve, disapprove, change, whatever you want to do, but it ultimately be your decision, certainly relying upon the advice of the Emergency Services Board. So we took out the reference to the chart, et cetera, so that's the bill.
And we had a longer update on this a couple of weeks ago. It's available for the public to view, if you want to see what those recommendations are. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We move forward with this.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner, the public hearing for both of these code bills will be at our next public business meeting on the 28th of April.
If I can just have just a couple of seconds more. Just as a reminder, this coming Sunday, April 10th, from 12 to 4, is our statewide volunteer recruitment day for Fire and EMS. It's sponsored as part of a federal grant to the Maryland State Firemen's Association and Maryland Fire Chiefs as an initiative to be able to recruit additional volunteers in our service. We recognize that volunteers are the backbone of emergency services in our county, and each volunteer we recruit actually saves tax dollars down the road. So we do have an initiative coming up, and also, I just wanted to thank the Commissioners personally for your move on the sprinkler legislation. I know that, you know, this may be one of the issues where we don't necessarily see eye to eye on the technology and all that, but it is a positive move towards protecting our citizens, and I believe also provides an incentive in offsetting the cost of sprinklers. I'd also like to thank Bob Nippenberg, although he sits back there rather quietly. Bob has been a true champion a number of years for the fire service, but in particularly with advancing the sprinkler agenda, so very thankful for that. Thank you.
Item number seven is North-South Appalachian Highway. Brenda Smith.
This resolution is simply, none of the content of it has changed. This was established in 2012, when we had put together, we had retained the services of Dave Mo, and we wanted to make sure we had the support of all of the counties that were going to be affected by it. So all that we're asking is that it be, it's updated with the signatures of the current Commissioners. The content of the document hasn't changed at all, and we just wanted to have that on record. We appreciate sincerely the support of the Commissioners and Matt's monthly participation in our work group meeting on behalf of the county.
Great. And Brenda, I would be remiss if I didn't say, Commissioner Valentine and myself were at the Greater Cumberland Committee meeting today, and that was just great, with bridges of opportunity are going, and it's really good to see Allegheny and Garrett working together, but when you have a program that you can see results is even better, and lifting those people out of poverty is just wonderful.
And we also want to know what you're going to do to outdo lunch that we have today.
While we're diligently working on the lunch menu for next month...
We need competition between those people.
Sincerely, absolutely.
Great.
Any other questions?
That's all.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate that.
Got a motion?
Motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 16-1.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brenda, because we know that's, this project, in case the people don't know, has really grown some legs in the last few years from where it started six years ago. I know that you diligently work on this.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And the legislature hasn't helped us out any this year.
Well, we'll just continue trying. Thank you.
Keep working on it. Thank you. Item number eight is Mr. Westfall, Law Officer's Enforcement Pension System, LOPS.
Mr. President, Commissioners, thank you very much. This resolution approves the transfer of the deputies in Sheriff's Office from the Employees Pension System to the Law Enforcement Officers Pension System. It's something that our deputies have requested for a number of years, and I recommend it to you for your adoption.
I make a motion that we move forward with this.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I know this is something Creed and I started working on Day 1 whenever we were elected
six and a half years ago, so you gentlemen definitely deserve this, so thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff, for you and your deputies coming out tonight for this. We appreciate it. And thank you for the, for your old glasses you were throwing away for letting me wear tonight, because of the need of me using them.
They take you well.
Dave gets life insurance he needs to get.
Very studious, very, very studious tonight.
He's going to make you sorry you ever sold him that policy.
That's right. Item number nine, Sierra. And that is the Cumberland Area Transportation Act.
Good evening. This is an amendment to the Transportation Improvement Program for 2014 to 2017. It's to add a new project, the Mount Savage Road or Jennings Run Bridge replacement. So this will get the preliminary engineering and construction funds moved through to begin that project. Tongue tied. So I'm requesting that the Commissioners, acting as the Cumberland Area MPO, sign the resolution and adopt the revised tip.
Now, Sierra, maybe this is a better question for state highway, but how does this cost $4 million?
Let's see here. So there's some right-of-way acquisition that is the bulk of the, let's see here, it's a total of $82,000, but the bulk of it for the construction is actually, let's see here, $780,000, so...
Gotcha.
Yeah.
That's for another day.
Yeah.
Yeah, really. But I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 16-9.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 10 is the South Cumberland Library renovation. Mr. Cale.
And this doesn't cost $4 million.
Doesn't cost us much at all.
No.
That's a good one. What we're here tonight for, we've been working with John Toeb from the library system. Years ago, the county engineering department kind of got involved with the library system because they don't have full-time engineers, et cetera, so we've kind of worked and reviewed the drawings. Adam and I have been involved with this, Adam Patterson, especially Adam. Adam's spent a lot more time on this than I have, but what we're doing is we're helping them, and we are requesting permission to advertise for bid for this project. The beauty of this one is its estimated construction cost is $1.5 million, but the county at this time is only going to have $85,000 in that. Usually it's a 10% match, but we did a roof on this project probably two years ago, and the county had to pay more than 10% at that point, and they're allowing us to put that towards our match. So $1.5 million project, and we should have $85,000 in that project. If you visit the South Cumberland Library, it's really in need of renovation. It's one of the older libraries we have in the system, and they have a very active community that is involved with the toddlers reading, et cetera, so it's a vibrant library. And it's a total renovation, new lighting. We're going to open it up, have a quiet study room, so it's going to be a nice, nice building.
Paul, what's the timeframe on that?
Well, we hope to advertise. If we do now, we would do a pre-bid in May. We've bid it in late May, early June, and then we start construction, and probably take about a year for construction. They have a plan, I don't want to say too much what their plan is, they have a plan to try to bring in a bookmobile, and they're going to try to relocate one of their reading programs for the kids. I think they're working with HRDC on that, but that is a big concern of theirs, because I think they have an active program in that. John Toeb's a great guy to work with on this project.
Yes, he is.
So we're asking permission to advertise for a bid on this one.
Any discussion?
No.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 11.
Item 11.
Back to back.
This is Prince Albert and Study Side Water Project. We're asking the Commissioners to be able to sign the grant loan documents. This is a, right now it's estimated to be a $1.6 million project. USDA is committing their funding once we get authorization to sign the documents. USDA is providing a $102,000 loan, and the beauty of that is an $854,000 grant. We still need $300,000 from the state that we think will be in the governor's budget and will be approved, and it will be a $150,000 loan, $150,000 grant, and then block grant would contribute a $400,000 grant. When you add up all those numbers, a $1.6 million project, we'd be at a $1.4 million grant and a $256,000 loan, so you can't...
Outstanding.
We do that to make that whole, those whole numbers are work to try to make them affordable to the community so those people can afford to pay the water bills. I would like to mention that USDA feels so good about this project that April 21st, that will be their Earth Day celebration. You're aware of that, I think, and we're trying to get some people thinking community. That would be April 21st, 11 o'clock, they're going to have a ceremony where USDA people come up, and hopefully the block grant people come up and make that announcement. So they feel very strong about this project, and as we spoke before, we love providing drinking water to the communities. That's kind of one of the projects to do in the county. So ask permission to sign the, for Jake to be able to sign the grant loan documents for USDA.
Absolutely, and this is a long time coming, because we had people from Barrowville, Sunny Side in here last year, and I think our initial meeting was January of 2015, so we're about 18 months from end to end.
Yeah, and then we jump in there so nobody gets too excited about that. The Barrowville Water Company will be able to stay with their own water system. They will not be required to hook up, they can stay their active-approved community, so that was a big, if you remember, that was a lot of controversy, so that, a lot of people wanted the water, the Barrowville Water Company did not want it at the time, and they will be allowed to stay on their own water system, so...
We'll let Jake run the meetings, hold up night areas now.
Sure, I'll be happy to take this.
But, you know, one of the important things about this, and I think what really helped get everyone on board, was there's people in Prince Albert that is actually pumping water out of Jennings Run into their well for drinking water, and today's times, that shouldn't be. So, Paul, I know personally, you've put a bunch of work into this job to make this happen, and tried to tweak it and make everybody happy, so, very good. So with that being said, I'll make a motion to accept item 11.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Our consent agenda, Mr. Everly.
Commissioners, it's kind of hard to get a shorter agenda under the consent program tonight other than the one that we have, but long and short of it is, is the only item that I have for you is item number 12, which is a simple MOU between Allegheny County, the City of Cumberland, and C3I to cost-share a clerical position, a part-time clerical position for the task force.
Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Everly.
Commissioners, first, I just wanted to acknowledge that Tuesday of this week, the county opened bids for the Creek Road Water Project, and we are very confident that by our meeting on April the 28th, that we'll be in a position to award the contract that evening. And Commissioners, I also have a piece of correspondence I would like to, that I have prepared for your signature, and I would like to read it into the record and then allow for any discussion.
Absolutely.
Commissioners, I have a letter dated April the 7th to Dr. Edward Root, President of the Allegheny County Board of Education, and the letter is relative to the Allegheny High School replacement of state funding protocol. Dear Dr. Root, by a letter dated October the 20th, 2015, Dr. David Lever, the Executive Director of the Maryland Public Schools Construction Program, notified us of the need for the Board of Education to reimburse $1,079,342 payable to the State of Maryland for funds previously made towards the new Allegheny High School project under the previous state funding formula. This money would then be reallocated by the state to the Board of Education in the coming fiscal year for the construction of the new school. The Board of Education has asked that Allegheny County consider providing funds for this repayment action from funds already committed by the county for this project. Be advised that the Board of Commissioners of Allegheny County hereby agree to tender the amount of $1,079,342 to the state from dedicated project funds segregated as part of the county's fund balance to satisfy the requirements set forth in Dr. Lever's October 20th, 2015 correspondence. Be it also known by the parties executing this letter that the aforementioned amount is part of the county's overall funding commitment, funding commitment of $13,700,000. This repayment to the state will decrease the county's future appropriation in addition to funds already committed as part of the county's bond proceeds from the project previously advanced in the amount of $916,038 used to cover expenses associated with the demolition of the former hospital facility. Following the issuance of the repayment amount, the parties recognize that the outstanding balance of the funds available to the Board from Allegheny County to complete the new school project will be $11,704,620. Letter continues, please execute copies of this letter acknowledging the amount specified herein and return one copy to the county wherein receipt of our staff will read me the check back to the State of Maryland on behalf of the Board of Education.
that I have for you is item number 12, which is a simple MOU between Allegheny County, the City of Cumberland, and C3I to cost-share a clerical position, a part-time clerical position for the task force.
Is there a motion to accept?
So move.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Mr. Everly.
Commissioners, first, I just wanted to acknowledge that Tuesday of this week, the county opened bids for the Creek Road Water Project, and we are very confident that by our meeting on April 28th, that we'll be in a position to award the contract that evening. And Commissioners, I also have a piece of correspondence I would like to, that I have prepared for your signature, and I would like to read it into the record and then allow for any discussion as well. Commissioners, I have a letter dated April 7th to Dr. Edward Root, President of the Allegheny County Board of Education, and the letter is relative to the Allegheny High School replacement of state funding protocol. Dear Dr. Root, by a letter dated October 20th, 2015, Dr. David Lever, the Executive Director of the Maryland Public Schools Construction Program, notified us of the need for the Board of Education to reimburse $1,079,342 payable to the State of Maryland for funds previously made towards the new Allegheny High School project under the previous state funding formula. This money would then be reallocated by the state to the Board of Education in the coming fiscal year for the construction of the new school. The Board of Education has asked that Allegheny County consider providing funds for this repayment action from funds already committed by the county for this project. Be advised that the Board of Commissioners of Allegheny County hereby agree to tender the amount of $1,079,342 to the state from dedicated project funds segregated as part of the county's fund balance to satisfy the requirements set forth in Dr. Lever's October 20th, 2015 correspondence. Be it also known by the parties executing this letter that the aforementioned amount is part of the county's overall funding commitment, funding commitment of $13,700,000. This repayment to the state will decrease the county's future appropriation in addition to funds already committed as part of the county's bond proceeds from the project previously advanced in the amount of $916,038 used to cover expenses associated with the demolition of the former hospital facility. Following the issuance of the repayment amount, the parties recognize that the outstanding balance of the funds available to the Board from Allegheny County to complete the new school project will be $11,704,620. Letter continues, please execute copies of this letter acknowledging the amount specified herein and return one copy to the county wherein receipt of our staff will remit a check back to the State of Maryland on behalf of the Board of Education. If you have any questions, feel free to contact our offices. Commissioners, as you know, under the previous funding formula, they found out it wasn't enough money. They had to rescind their application under the old formula. They had spent, you know, $1,079,000, and it seems like a rather silly exercise, us having to forward money back so they could turn it around and give it back to us. But nonetheless, those are the rules that are dictated by the state. They're, they're coming up with the vast majority of the money for the project, and that letter's out on the table for your consideration.
And I think it's important for the public to realize we're not cutting or funding the school by one penny, because even though we send this $1 million back to the state, then the state sends out $1 million plus to the Board of Education in her funding package. So the school system isn't losing one penny in this transaction. It's just state bookkeeping.
And we don't pretend to understand why the state operates the way they do, but...
On anything.
You own anything, on school funding or anything. But we knew that this money had to get repaid at some point, and whoseever pocket it came out of, it would just be deducted. So I, I'm going to sign it, and I hope our commissioner grows well.
We're good. Let's pass her down.
First one? Commissioners, we'll make arrangements tomorrow to see to it that Dixie Heffner gets copies of both of these letters in advance of the Board's meeting, which is set for next Tuesday. And that's all I have. Thank you, Commissioner. Creek Road? We just talked about that. We're open. It's on the 28th.
Got it. Mr. Root?
I have nothing.
Wait here a minute.
Make it nice and quick. Been a slow week. Only had to make one trip to Annapolis this year. My understanding is, as of today, the legislature overrode the governor's veto of the new transportation funding formula that they came out with, so it's going to be real, real hard for anybody other than Montgomery County to get transportation funding with this new system in place. Also, I'd like to announce, we're getting towards summer months, and the Allegheny County One Stop Jobs Center is going to have a teen job fair on Tuesday, April 26th, and this will be a good opportunity for our young people to find employment. It's open to all employers and all teenagers that's looking for the employment, so that will be held at the One Stop Center, April 26th, from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. Sheriff Brody?
Very good. Well, I know that, Mr. President, you're going to speak about Buffalo Wild Wings here under your comments, so I'm not going to say too much, except congratulations and welcome. But what's, has me think a little bit about that is, for as much businesses we have promoted over the last several years, and as big as an increase to property taxes provided for Allegheny County, we still seem to be taking it on the chin out there from a lot of people why we don't call General Motors and tell them to build a new place here in Allegheny County. It doesn't quite work that way. And we are pushing, and we decided six years ago that we was going to open and be welcome to any business that could come in here that would pay taxes, have employees, and wasn't detrimental to health. And I think that we've been fairly successful about that, so that really irks me to hear such comments as that. And with this especially being the silly season, I'm telling everyone, get out and vote. Early voting, Diane made me think about it tonight because I watched the thing the other night, and the wife actually had to turn the TV off because I shouldn't watch that stuff because I had someone sitting, a candidate's running for an office, we're not going to get into that, that was saying that, he was talking to a guy who was in Ohio, worked at a steel mill, that they was going to put him back to work. And the next breath, they went on to say how they was going to make sure under their term, they was going to shut down every coal mine in the United States. And I thought, now, how are you going to do that because you can't make steel without coke and coal? So I really wonder where these candidates come from, and if they're really that dumb or they just play that dumb. Because they keep saying that everyone's for the middle class, but they keep regulating the middle-class side of business. And that's one thing I want to make very apparent, all this stuff we get blamed for. It's not Allegheny County that's putting these rules and regulations in that run people off and scare people off. We're the total opposite, so with that being said, sir, there's going to be more to continue when I can cool down because that's had me just frustrated for weeks because such a large part of our county depends on coal, and a large part of this whole central region of the United States depends on it. And we got to have it. I mean, we got to have power, we got to have energy, period.
You stay wound up, you're insured now. Keep going.
Yeah, no, that's enough because I can feel my blood pressure going up now, so.
That's why there's a "feel the burn" bumper sticker on that truck out there, I think.
Yeah, that's right.
Sheriff, your officers, thanks for coming tonight. You know, this was something that Creed and Bill wanted to do, and when I found out that we're the only local law enforcement agency that didn't have LEOPS, you know, that's not right. And you guys put your lives on the line every day, and you should be compensated for that. And I know we can't do that salary-wise, but this is something that evens the playing field a little bit more than, more than just a normal state employee, and that's, that's the system you're coming out of. So it worked out well for us, you know. I think when Cumberland moved over, they had to pay a couple million dollars to get into LEOPS. The way it fell, we didn't have to do that, and they actually gave us a credit to move into it. So it is going to cost us a little more, but for me, and I speak for the Board, it's worth it.
Absolutely.
And Creed hit on Buffalo Wild Wings. It's great, it'll get people off the interstate, it's new tax base, and, you know, you can say, these aren't the jobs we want. Of course, it's not, not exactly what we want. We want high-paying jobs, we want jobs that are sustainable, manufactured, the new economy. But it's a start, and it pays taxes, and that's a heck of a lot better than, than what was happening for many years here. So, and it's a great restaurant. If you haven't been in it, check it out for sure.
And one thing, you know, whenever Creed was talking about state regulations and all, Buffalo Wild Wings is going to have a hard time getting traffic off of Route 68 until people know that it's there because they're not allowed to have signage on 68 because they don't serve breakfast also. That's one of the nice little regulations they have. If you have a restaurant, you want signage on 68, you have to serve three meals a day.
Three meals.
Maybe we tell them to serve lunch twice.
That's right.
Commissioners...
Sir?
The head of HR was with us on Sunday at their soft opening, and they were very proud to report that Buffalo Wild Wings has hired 120 new employees.
Wow.
And I believe out of that number, I believe that 25 of them was either assistant managers or shift managers or general managers, so when, and that's the thing, I'm not trying to get back on my horse here, but when they say that we're not bringing high-paying jobs, that is not true, because when you take that industry in there, for the amount of salaried employees and high-paying jobs they bring compared to just the regular jobs, they are actually ahead of the curve. It wouldn't, so.
And the money it brings in from, from the region of people that wouldn't be coming to Laval otherwise.
Absolutely.
Our constituents, Mr. Kenneth Wilmot signed up to speak on driving while suspended licenses.
Oh, thank goodness, with the sheriff in the house tonight, we'll get more answers.
I'm glad he's here because he knows exactly who I'm talking about.
Many should call the government about that.
Anyway, I spoke at the city meeting on the same subject. We have a multitude of people out there driving on a suspended license. Little over three years ago, I was rear-ended out on Martin's Mountain. The person hit me, I don't know how fast he was going, but he drove me 165 feet up the mountain, demolished my car, his truck. He jumped out and ran. Now, the latest episode of this character was last week, out on 68. He wrecked and booked on that one, but he got caught. Anyway, prior to him running into me, rear-ending me, he hadn't been to court yet on previous two cases of being picked up on a suspended driver's license. So when he hit me, he had three in a row. So we go to court, he gets nine months in jail and $3,000 fine. Wonderful. No, it ain't wonderful, because since then, I think he's been picked up, I don't know how many, I think it's about five, for the same thing, driving on a suspended license. Now, if you go in your computer, my neighbor looked him up, this character has six pages on his rap sheet. He's well-known to every state trooper, all the sheriff deputies, law enforcement in the city. I would imagine over in West Virginia and Pennsylvania the same way. But the problem is, how in the world do you keep these people from driving? The justice system, I see, they just run into one door and out the other. Now, I've talked to a lot of people in law enforcement. They say, well, the only time they'll do anything is maybe he'll kill somebody or injure them. But even that, they should be taken off the street prior to all this stuff. Now, I'm, as a victim, I'm on the bottom of the totem pole. He completely ruined my life. My, my back, every, my whole back is compressed, one vertebrae's 90%, constant pain. But it doesn't do me any good to come and talk if you people don't pick up the ball. You're the next on the totem pole. You got to go, I don't know who, and say, hey, we want these people off the road. And then the next, next problem with this, these people who are giving these people their cars to drive, they should be held just as much responsible. They're enabling these people to drive. Now, just another incident, last month in December, guy came down the road, sideswiped my neighbor's car, demolished it, blew out the right front tire on his truck. He missed my house, my truck, and my work shed by a half inch. He went 154 feet down in my property. No license, and the registration on the truck had run out three months ago. Now, the people owned that truck, they knew he shouldn't be driving because that was their grandparents. He did not talk to his great-grandparents. Oh, I told Donnie not to drive, but why did he give him the truck, the keys to drive? So somebody, I know Sheriff and Stapley, they all do a fantastic job picking these people up, but the justice system ain't doing their part.
Mr. Wilmot, you have one, one minute left.
Oh, I can have another five?
If you're good, one, one left.
Oh, sorry about that. Anyway, thanks for listening. I don't know what else to say, but I hope you people realize, because these people are out there, and everybody here, you might get run into by one of these people. They, not only do they drive without a suspended license, half of them claim their dunk on drugs or the combination.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I almost forgot to mention, I made it to one of the sheriff's heroin town halls. I'm so glad I made it. Commissioner Valentine's been to most of them, I think. And Behind the Orange Curtain, such a powerful movie, you know, and even knowing a little bit about it just from serving in office, you don't get the full impact of it till, really, till you watch that movie. So thank you for doing that, and there was a good crowd there on, on Monday night.
Very nice, very good crowd.
Yeah. The next two weeks, we have early voting in this room, so our next public business meeting won't be till Thursday, April 28th, at 5:00. We do have a budget workshop next Thursday at 3:00.
3:00.
3:00 next Thursday is our first budget workshop. Thank you.